Good evening, everyone. It is now 7:00 PM and I call the meeting to order. The first order of business today is to elect a chairman for the calendar year 2020. Would someone please make a motion to nominate the chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Harold Watson as the chair.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So the motion has been moved and seconded by John Staley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. So the motion passed unanimously and I welcome Harold Watson to be the chair of the Planning Commission.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you. And before I hand over the rest of the business to the chair, please. I would like to welcome our new commission members, Christina Kazanas and Debbie Lombardi, who is our alternate, and she'll be sworn in shortly, but she's come here to observe the meeting. Welcome. We've had a very productive year last year, and I'm hoping that the same trend will continue this year. Just one request from everyone, please stay focused on the topic when you're discussing an item so that we run our meetings very efficiently, and the public also will become more interested if we, you know, ran in the timeframe that we are required to run in. And thank you again, and welcome, Mr. Harold Watson.
Thank you, and Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to our new members. Welcome to our returning members. I hope we'll continue to work as we always have. Our first order of business, do we have to?
No, your second order of business is to nominate a vice chair.
What is our first? Our second order of business is we need to nominate a vice chair. And before we do that, let's welcome our newest member, Mr. William Boyd.
No, he's a member, he's a regular. He's taking Pat's position.
Just so you know, we just voted myself in as chair, so that's the first thing that we've done in our new. I'm glad to see your daughters here. It's the next generation, very good. We were in the middle of-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. John Staley as vice chair.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Christina.
Now, how do we do this? We vote them into-
Yeah, you've got to vote.
Okay, so we need to vote now. Each one individually, correct?
Yes.
So John was first, so let's vote for John. All in favor of John? Two. And then Christina, all in favor of Christina? And I'm the third, Christina. Yes. All right. So essentially, you'll see on the list of duties what your job is.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome, we congratulate.
I get to? Okay, now we're ready to close this, our administrative meeting?
Our organizational meeting, I'm sorry.
Do we need, we don't need a?
We need a adjourn.
We need someone to? To?
Make a motion to close.
I need someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All in favor? Oh, second, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Let me find my, now, let me, let me find my, so I can actually do it sensibly. So we're at now, we need a vote to open, or do I just simply call? Okay, I'm now calling our meeting, first meeting of the year, January 21st, 7:20, with our new members.
Our alternate, Sandra Zalik.
Our alternate, Sandra Zalik. Our new alternate, who is going to be Debbie Lombardi. Susmita Alada, our planner. Myself, Harold Watson, your new chair. Christina Cassanzas, our new vice chair. William Boyd, our new member from the first and second district, the third and fourth district, excuse me. Dan from the seventh and eighth. And John from the ninth and 10th. So we're, we represent all of the town. What else do I need to do? Okay, the first item we need to do, I need someone to approve the minutes, if you look up, we need to approve the agenda first, we have our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
Can the newly elected members of the commission vote on the approval of the minutes that we were not present for?
You probably shouldn't. It probably should just be us three members, since we're the only ones active. But if we really stick to it, I think I'm the only one who was at that meeting, so what do we do in that instance?
So moved.
Thank you.
You got it.
And do we need to vote?
John.
We need a second?
Second.
And now, we need a vote, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay. Moving on. We have zoning referral tonight from Mr. Knott. Mr. Knott, before our new members, can you give just a brief summary of where we've gone so far on this?
Yes, I was intending to do that, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with a firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I represent Erstad Biddle Properties, which owns the Dock Shopping Center. And I have for many years, and this application is for a zone text amendment modifying the height of a building in a light industrial zone. Because most of the Dock Shopping Center is in a light industrial zone, some of it, half of it is half of it. The particular building we're concerned about is in a light industrial zone. But getting back to what the chairman says, I was here in October of last year, and I made a presentation about another zone text amendment. And in that case, I was seeking to amend the definition of building height as it applied townwide. In other words, if you had approved that request of mine, it would have applied to all buildings townwide, residential, commercial, multifamily, you name it. The building height would have been allowed to go up five feet to accommodate HVAC equipment and elevators. That's, that's the gist of it. I'm asking to modify the height to allow HVAC and elevators to go up five feet above the, the height restriction set forth in the zoning regulations. You were correct to point out to me that such a modification is not needed in residential zones. It's not needed in most commercial zones. It really, the only where, the only place that it is needed is in a light industrial zone. And in this particular case, as the Dock Shopping Center is concerned, we had approved last year a self-storage facility to the rear of the area, which was the former Sydney Street, where the Starbucks is going, as you face it, the old Sydney Street. To the right, there's going to be a Starbucks with a drive-through. To the left, there's going to be a Chipotle restaurant with a drive-through. And behind that, up against I-95, there's going to be a self-storage facility, which is 60 feet high, which is allowed under zoning, under the current zoning regulations. 60 feet is permitted. This regulation allows us to increase that building height by a maximum of five feet, subject to such component or components being located no closer than 15 feet from the edge of the roof, and screened with materials and planting so that the HVAC equipment can't be seen from the street. In other words, it's got to be 15 feet back from the edge of the building, it's got to be screened so it can't be seen from the street, and then it can go up with an additional five feet to service elevators, mechanical, HVAC, and other maintenance components. So this regulation is different than the one I was here in October, because this regulation simply applies to light industrial districts. Instead of amending the definition of height, I, I made an exception in the light industrial zone regulation to allow an additional five feet in a light industrial zone. And in so doing, I have taken into consideration your administrative comments and your, the comments at this meeting, that the regulation no longer applies townwide to residential applications, multifamily applications, or even some commercial applications, because it's strictly limited to properties in the light industrial zone. Susmita had given me a copy of the New Orleans zoning regulations, in which they go into great detail as far as the proper aesthetic facade that buildings should have, at least in New Orleans. And one of the things that she had pointed out was that these components shouldn't be able to be seen from the street. So I made that modification consistent with the New Orleans regulations that Susmita had sent me to accommodate that issue. Excuse me. And in thereby modifying my application, Jay Habansky wrote a letter to the zoning commission dated October 15th. I don't know if, if you guys got it, but he does an administrative comment prior to any zoning commission meeting, and they're having a zoning commission meeting tomorrow night on this application. But what he says essentially is that he has looked at this application in light of the plan of conservation of development, and in all respects, this application is consistent with the Stratford Plan of Conservation and Development. He cites four examples in his letter where it's, where it's consistent. Include protection of significant view sheds in the site plan review process, to streamline the development approval process to assure that development, which are consistent with the town's development regulations, are approved in an efficient and prudent fashion, to simplify the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understanding, and industrial uses are important to the town's economy, and their expansion will continue to be accommodated. In conclusion, he says that the regulation should be considered for the zoning commission's approval, and obviously, I'm asking for your approval as well. Thank you.
Yeah, the question I'm asking is, that variance, I guess it's called a variance, is only for that particular light industrial property, and that doesn't carry over to any other projects that are already going?
No, that's not true. It would apply to any light industrial property, townwide. Just, just light industrial property.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I actually have a couple of questions. One, I guess the first question is, why, why seek a change to the text instead of just seeking out a variance for your specific project?
That, I can answer that very easily, because you're not the first person to ask me that question. Legally in Connecticut, in order to be entitled to a variance, of the zoning regulation, you have to have, you have to prove to the Board of Zoning Appeals that you have a hardship. And the hardship can't be self-created, and it can't be financial, if, under Connecticut law. So that if we design a building that needs a variance, it's self-created, there's no hardship, because our hardship is self-created. We designed the building to need the variance. So if such a variance was approved by the town and then appealed to court, we would lose. So it's, it's a very dangerous position that we put ourselves in, not we, but as developers put ourselves in. Whenever they design a project that needs variances, they expose themselves to extortion by unethical people who would take an appeal for the purpose of slowing down or stopping the project until they get paid off to go away. So we don't design projects that require variances.
So I guess, excuse me, thank you for your presentation. So this was not something planned, you kind of ran into this-
Exactly.
-after the building was pretty much already done.
We, we originally thought that the HVAC and elevator equipment would be able to be contained within the foot or two that we have above the 60 feet on the roof, only to find out after all the buildings have been knocked down and plants have been taken out that we need five feet. And, and it became a big problem because it, it, first of all, nobody's ever going to notice it from the street, because it's going to be five feet on top of 60 feet. So you're not going to see it from East Main Street, you're not going to see it from anywhere. And there are no residences around there.
So you would see it from the highway, looking down.
Yeah, you would see it from the highway. Well, what you're going to see from the highway, you don't know this, but as part of our zoning approval, we agreed to put a big sign on the back of the self-storage facility facing the cars coming over the Washington Bridge and towards Stratford from Milford, and, and facing the cars coming over 95 towards Stratford, "Welcome to Stratford." A big sign, "Welcome to Stratford." So that's what people are going to see. And the equipment is going to be, it's going to be-
Behind that sign, so to speak?
No, no, the sign is on the wall. But the equipment, the, the equipment itself is going to be shielded. There's going to be fences or plantings or something around it, so you can't see it.
My second question was regards to the language in, or the text, in the text change amendment says, "Subject to any such component or components being located no closer than 15 feet from the edge of the roof." I think I probably, just in order to close loopholes, would be more comfortable with the edge, or all edges of the roof, so that no one moving forward would be able to claim that, well, it's 15 feet from this one, so it qualifies, but maybe it's nine from the other.
Well, the intent is-
Mm-hmm, I under, yes, I understand.
The way you're suggesting.
Yes, yes.
That was, that was a modification that was suggested by staff, I think. I think Jay suggested this 15-foot thing. And it simply said it back from the edge, so it can't be seen from the street, that's the idea.
Right, and I understand that. I, it wasn't the 15 feet that I had at a, that I was opposed to. I think the issue is that it clarifies that it's all edges and not just the edge, because the edge could be interpreted to mean one edge, and there are typically four.
Anybody else?
Yes, good evening, thank you. The only question that I recall that remains open from our last discussion on this matter was, how large will the elevator be? Five feet up is one thing, 30 feet across is another. I think that was brought up, and there was no comment on that. Well, the elevator is not going to be a passenger elevator, because this is a self-storage building. Exactly. So it's going to be at least double, I don't know the answer to your question, but it's, it'll be, it'll be able to accommodate, you know, push carts and things like that. So I imagine it'll be at least double the size of a passenger elevator, maybe a little wider. I've only been in one self-storage facility in my life, and that's what I recall the elevator being, you know, two times, two and a half times the size of a-
So it doesn't really seem like it's a problem in the concept of going up five feet more?
No, exactly.
Thank you.
I would like to let the commission members know that this is a very trivial issue that oftentimes developers face when they're designing their buildings. Of course, they should come under the maximum height limit of 60 feet, but sometimes, you know, things happen and they go slightly over. As the applicant's representative has pointed out clearly, this is not going to be visible from the street level at all. Because now, there is a limitation that says it should be offset 15 feet from the edges of the roof, you cannot see from the ground level when you look up. But definitely, when you're on the highway, like I was noticing after the fact, after this was heard in October, I was looking at all the parapets on the highway, and I've seen it on Marshalls and all the, you know, retailers by the highway, that they do have these elevator shafts protruding from the maximum height.
I just wanted to say too, I appreciate the fact that they brought this to our attention. I mean, I've seen a lot of projects go by and, with height restrictions and everything else, and people don't necessarily conform to those height restrictions. So appreciate the fact that they brought it to us. I agree with you, we changed the wording on that to edges, which should clarify that. And I think from your point, John, as long as it's 15 feet regardless of the width of, of the, of the elevator shaft, you know, we, we would be okay with it. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this text amendment. And based on also the conclusion that we got from Jay on this, and I think in order for them to move forward with this, it's a, it's a good thing for the town, adds to our tax rolls, obviously, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Before we do that, may I make a final comment on this? I hope everybody's aware that I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I also want everybody to understand that it is affecting all of our MA zoning in town. So this project might have solved the problem, but we now are going to be facing it with every project that comes in in that, in those zones townwide. So it's something that we're going to have to look at. Every time they come in for a building, we're going to have to say 65 is what we're going to be looking at, not 60. Which means that we now, after having achieved a uniform height throughout all of our code, I believe, we now are breaking it up. That was a huge battle that we fought to try to achieve that. That's, it is where it is. I just want to make sure that-
Can I, can I just add, as a planning staff, I agree, but I also appreciate that there is this offset requirement, which was not previously included in the regulation. So like Mr. Sant pointed out, there were, even if there were violations, the violations should still abide by the code and have the 15 feet offset. Because I did share some example to Mr. Knott, who was himself surprised when he saw, you know, historic structures having HVAC equipment hanging from their parapet, and, you know, from the edge of the roof, and you can actually see that from the ground level, and it's visually very obtrusive. So at the very least, even if you're going above, you're making sure it is screened properly and it's offset from, you know, a normal eye scale.
So, yeah-
I'm sorry, just a question for the town planner. Because I haven't quite memorized all of, like, where the, all the zones are yet. What other areas of town are light industrial?
I think it's mostly by Lotship. You can see a lot, and there are some areas on Ferry, and if Mr. Knott can talk about that.
Yeah, all of the property on Lordship Boulevard, on both sides of the street. All of the property on Honey Spot Road, on both sides of the street. Some of the property on Barnum Avenue from Boston Avenue going towards Bridgeport. Some of the property to the rear of the stores, as you're going towards Milford across from Burlington. This used to be a coal site.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why it's light industrial. Historically, it had been used for coal. And there are some other light industrial properties as you go towards Bridgeport on Lordship Boulevard, just before you get to I-95, there's a street that goes off to the right that has a, that has a building on the corner, it used to be a bank. That's all light industrial, and there's some raw land there that's also light industrial. On the other side of the transfer station, behind the transfer station on Watson Boulevard, it's heavy industrial there. That's the only heavy industrial site in town.
So basically, what I'm hearing is that all of the areas in which this change would, would impact this are all in my district? Okay, okay.
By the way, Mrs. Kazanas, I've been doing this for 45 years, and I don't know where all the zones are now.
I don't feel so bad.
As a point of order, moving this forward- We have, we have- Second motion? Yes, second. favorable motion?
Also, I just want to include, we changed the edge to edges.
All edges.
Okay.
I just had one question.
Yes.
They said on the top of the building that there's a sign saying, "Welcome Stratford." Is there any language in that they can't put a billboard on top of that building?
I can answer that.
Because it is coming right in from-
Two, two answers. One is, no billboards are allowed under Stratford zoning regulations, at all, commercial billboards, they're prohibited, townwide. Secondly, the "Welcome to Stratford" sign in this whole complex that I'm talking about right now was approved as a so-called special case under the zoning regulations. And when you get special case approval, you have to build it exactly as they approved it. So we're not allowed to modify, to move the sign or do anything like that.
So there's no change in that later that it could be advertising?
They even told us what colors they wanted.
Okay, so that's kind of a permanent structure? Because I could see where that would be prime real estate for eyes to turn into advertising if, if there wasn't language saying that it was-
No, that, that can't happen.
Okay.
By the way, congratulations to the new commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair Lady, congratulations. Welcome to a difficult job. You're going to learn a lot. And by the way, if you do vote for this, Mr. Chairman, this will be the first time you ever voted in favor of an application that I presented.
I'm aware of that. But I, but I must, if I can comment, I appreciate that you actually worked with us on this. So that's what I'm trying to acknowledge with my vote. We were right in the middle of a second, so we now are calling a vote. Closing? Anybody make, have a final discussion? You may.
You should probably use the mic, so you're-
I was the one who recommended the offset from the street, but I don't know where the 15 feet came in, probably from Jay. But I wonder if we've considered, what if the building is not 30-something feet wide? You know, then you can't get 15 feet from the edge.
If you read what he wrote here, it basically, it ends with that, of the building from being visible from any street or streets and/or highways which abut the building. So we're really going to have to have a little geometry to find out what the radius is of, I mean, what the angle is of sight of view.
Okay.
That's the only way we're going to be able to make some of those decisions at that point. We're going to have to have elevations to see what it looks like from neighbors' houses.
Yeah, I just worry there's always going to be exceptions and-
I, I agree with you.
It's a slippery slope-
Yep.
-that we're entering today.
Any final comments? We don't, we asked for that. We never found out where that elevator is on the building. We were, our initial questions were, is it on the front of the building, or the back of the building, or the side of the building, because it makes a big difference. We never got an answer, one way or the other. But, that's my only comment on all of this, but.
I think we should proceed with-
Will, will someone make a motion, including this text amendment?
It's already in there.
It's in there. Okay, the text amendment is in there, will someone make a motion, please?
No, it's already been, it was seconded.
Oh, oh, so let's take a vote. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you very much.
So it's four to one. The next thing we have is, for the new people on here, you'll see, these are permanent items on our agenda, which only, we only act on if we are, if we have some business before us. So the next thing we have is, we have no site plan reviews, we have no 820, oh, we have three 824s. Okay, the first one that we have is the Cutspring Road donation. Is there anybody here for that? Can you please?
So this materials, these materials were transmitted to our office from Attorney Bruce Jackson, and I sent the package over to you last week, so I'm hoping everybody caught the packages in time. It's a roughly two-acre lot that was bought at a tax sale by an individual with a mistaken belief that this parcel was buildable, but due to the presence of wetlands predominantly on the parcel, they could not build it as planned. And the current owner of the property entered into several litigation matters with the town in his attempt to make it buildable, but to no avail. So the owner now intends to see this property be donated to the town, and the current assessment is $6,650,000. is $6,650, with taxes being current. The town engineer sees value in purchasing this lot since it abuts town-owned land and sewer and could provide another public access to town's open space parkland. Therefore, the town engineer has recommended that this donation be approved, and I've also enclosed his comments letter at the end of the application. And to add to everything that I said, this will actually increase the open space acreage for the town. If you look at the P O C D's objectives, one of the objectives is to increase the open space acreage in the town and, you know, use it for, you know, conservation.
There's a price on this donation.
That's what it says. The current assessment is $6,650.
So we would be paying assessed value, not the market value?
That's, I think, you know, the market value will be 70% of the appraised value, and that's a negotiation that will happen between the council and the applicant, like, once we, the commission approves the 8-24 review, the recommendation is sent to the council, and the council will then look into the price. So your job here as a planning commission members is only solely to look at the land use and see if the land use, proposed land use fits in the plan of conservation and development's objectives.
And if I can make, if I may comment, if you look on the documents here, it actually does have what the appraised value is, which is 9,500. So somewhere between 65 and 95 is my assumption what the town would be paying for.
They call it donation because it's a nominal rate, but it doesn't mean that he's giving the land for free.
But it actually falls exactly in line with our green, our greenfield properties that we need to add to. It also, if you look in what John Casey, the town engineer, had said, he had talked about the fact that it potentially could be a future floodplain storage area, which is what we are desperately in need of, and we are as much in need of that in the north part of town as we are in the south part of town. That is an area where we can eventually create places for floodwaters to percolate back into, into the groundwater. I think that, that, these are the kind of deals that don't come up very often because we have so few of what I call orphaned land, although technically, this really isn't. There is a buildable way, but it is not, so it's not, it's not landlocked. We actually can make a connection into other, other areas. A property like this could be, when we were looking for a dog park, we could have thought about something like this for a dog park. There's a lot of uses that the town could put this to good use for. We also are committed to creating more pocket parks. That would be a fabulous way for a pocket park, because that's a relatively developed area, right, in that, in that area. So I'm going to essentially vote in favor, but before I do, anybody have any comments?
No, I'd just like to comment. First of all, I think we all appreciate the donation, even though there's a small cost, but I think the, the benefits certainly outweigh the cost. So I'd like to move ahead and approve.
Any other comments?
Second.
Comments from our staff, who put a lot of work into this, and if this is going to be something for the future Stratford-
Anyone would like to make a motion to accept it and move it on to-
Second. You have the motion, you need a second.
I'll second.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope? Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, the next thing on is the UI easements. And I believe we have a UI guy here.
Yes.
Do we want to hear from him?
Yes.
What is his name?
Oh, he's going to announce his name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Is the mic working?
Might be a little low for me, so. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and planning commission members. My name's Jim Yeske, I'm with UI, I manage our capital improvement project for transmission lines. We've been working with the city for a little over a year now on an easement at the Longbrook site, which, contract plating site, which many of you are probably familiar with. We're in the process of upgrading our 115 KV transmission lines along the railroad corridor. We are removing our assets from on, right now, they're currently on top of the MetroNorth catenaries, which are, have been installed in the early 1900s, so they're, they're not in the best of shape structurally. Plus, in order for us to do any work on our structures, we have to take track outages and, and get protective services and take out their rail lines. So they don't like it when we have to do that. We don't like it when we have to do that. So we are relocating onto new monopole structures. You may have seen some of them already along the Houstonic River. We did the river crossing already. Predominantly, our structures will be remaining within the railroad right-of-way. However, to construct these structures, we do need a little bit of room to access to where the new structures will be, and since our new structures are a little further from the tracks, when the wind is blown, we have to take a bit of a permanent easement for, to take into account that the conductors will sway with the, with the wind. So what we've been working on is a permanent easement for the conductor sway and a temporary easement for access, so we can get in there and construct our facilities. I believe I sent out a little fact sheet on what the, the background of the project is. I don't know if that got to you guys, I just got it over to you today.
I did give it to them just before the meeting, and I passed on emails to-
We've been working, I know there's a lot of concern with the environmental impacts over there. We've been working with Mike Looney from the Army Corps of Engineers and Jim DiLorenzo from the EPA, as well as John Casey from the town, to alleviate any concerns, and I believe we're at a point where we've addressed the EPA and Army Corps' concerns, and now we're here to try and finalize an easement with you guys.
Are you finished?
Sorry.
That was it?
Sorry.
He spelled your last name for me.
Y E S K E.
I have a question. Is, my assumption, this is from the new Baird substation that's gone in?
Correct.
And it's going across to the railroad bridge, right north of Washington? The Washington Bridge?
Yes. I call it Devon Tybridge.
Yes, I, I'm using the proper name, which is Washington. I read that recently. I used to call it Devon also. Is this the same connections that, that you've been working on, on California and Broad Street?
So heading towards Bridgeport?
Yeah, well, it would be like half a mile east of the Baird plant. The Baird-
So yes, this will interconnect the piece from, we've already done from, from Baird Substation West. Now we're connecting from our new Baird Substation to-
To east. So the work that was done on the railroad electric trestles along California Street in the last year, where they did widening, EP, DEP did river widening in the old Tanner's Brook area, and they also did all the electrical work. Was that only MetroNorth that was not you?
That I'm not certain. So I know the DOT is doing upgrades on their catenary structures as well, with a lot of the new catenary structures. We're strictly the remon poles that you see, so the new steel poles outside of the railroad.
I guess my, my question is, are you going to end up with the same structure from the river to the current plant?
Correct.
And is, does all that right-of-way and all of that old structure already exist going through Stratford? Are we looking at any sizable increases?
No.
In, so basically, you're taking existing right-of-way and replacing existing, old equipment?
Correct. We are, there are a couple instances where we are getting easement. 95% of our structures remain within the right-of-way. There's, I think in this section, there's three that are partially or fully outside of the railroad right-of-way, but we've obtained easements for, for those locations.
Okay, here's my, off the wall, excuse me, everybody. Years ago in Stratford, there was talk of the town capturing a greenway through your northern Stratford transmission lines. What you're doing here is a nut, would be an incredible opportunity for us if you would be willing to allow a bike path through some of your right-of-way. I'm just giving this to you to take home with you to think about, because I did actually see at one point, we had put bike path through the contract plating site. It was winding around, right at the edge of the railroad station, coming around, going down Longbrook to connect up to the East Coast Greenway. So that would allow us to move the East Coast Greenway off the highway, even if, for that little quarter-mile section. I looked at your, your drawings here, and there is a, from the base of your inward, your outward from the railroad track side, there is a 12-foot strip, I assume, which is part of the strip that you're asking to, essentially buy, buy a right-of-way from the town for, an easement for. You're not going to be putting trees back in there, but bikes don't ever get more than six feet tall. So if you would put that in your bag, it would be something that I know you'd find support in the town for.
I, I can bring that back to our planners, for sure.
Okay.
That is a separate discussion, and I know, that's why I apologized in advance.
I don't ever let an opportunity go by, because the greenway is under our jurisdiction, and I won't stop speaking about it when I can. Will this impact in any way the town's current planning to redevelop the contract plating site?
So there, there is some wording in the easement that we negotiated with John Casey on to allow, I know there, there's concerns about a storm sewer there, and maintenance of the storm sewer. There was some language in there regarding, we don't want people excavating around the base of our towers, so obviously, you start digging, the tower falls over, that's a problem.
Well, I believe, I believe that land, because it's all EPA brownfield, is never going to be excavated once they put a cap on it. So you're going to get your request more than you know.
If they have to do some modifications or repair the sewer that's there. We, I think the language in the easement is that we were notified, and we can have somebody out there to, to say, wait a minute, you're starting to undermine the foundation, we need to, we need to stop and, and find another alternative. But we did take that development and future needs into consideration with our language of our easement.
I also looked up in the documentation, just for everybody's interest, this project goes back to 1998. That's how long they've been working on this. So this is not a willy-nilly, quick, let's-get-this-done kind of idea. It's an upgrade of the East Coast. It's my understanding. Yes.
You had mentioned that you had worked with deep in EPA on some of their concerns. Can you let us know what some of their concerns were? I mean, I know the extent of the contamination on the site, but-
Where our access route interferes with their access route, so our original plans didn't, they're, they're building a haul road through the contract plating site. Our original access road conflicted with it, so we met with them and said, well, we can build a little platform off of the edge of your, your access road and use your access road, instead of us having to build this much more complicated access road.
Just a question, just for interest's sake. Where do you arrive at the, the $101,000 and the $23,000 going back to the town? Is that for services that the town might need, as far as police shutting down a road, or is, how is that negotiated?
I unfortunately was not involved in, in the, in the number crunching. We, we had appraisals done on the property, and, and I think we estimated what the, the property would be worth and what our impacts on the property would be worth, based on the square footage that we're taking.
So will our services be needed at all, as far as the police to shut down a road, say, going across East Main Street there?
They shouldn't be, for this particular section, no, but we, we will have needs for police protection in other areas when we're working on the project. Our contractor would sign on with, with-
Cubzamia.
-your police for, what do you call it? Off-duty-
Special.
-protection.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The costs for those properties, are there ongoing costs, like tax? I mean, are we collecting tax on that land that we're granting them that they're paying for? Is there any ongoing fees?
To be honest, I'm not aware of the costs, because I was, you know, focusing mainly on land use and not the cost. I believe that's not, you know, our authority here. It's for the assessors' office and the council and Economic Development Office to look into that.
Well, I guess my question was, if they're buying the land, are there ongoing taxes for them purchasing?
The town currently owns the contract plating site. We took ownership of it in order to remediate it with DEP several years ago. So essentially, what they're doing is they're buying a right-of-way through that property, which eventually, once it's remediated, will be packaged for development of some kind. We don't know yet what they could actually build there. There have been several proposals over the years.
And just to add, this is a significant project for the town's economic development initiative, and there is a potential to see a larger revenue generating property there. So this is very timely.
Could, is there any possibility that we could get a statement from Economic Development that they're okay with everything that's going on?
This was initiated through the Office of Economic Development, like-
So they're very aware of it?
I know they're very well aware of it.
They're very aware of it, okay.
I mean, Mary Dean is my boss, and, you know.
Anybody else have any questions? Are we simply-
We have to vote and forward a favorable recommendation to the council.
We have to send to the council, not to planning.
Yes.
Okay. So what this is asking us to do is to give a favorable, or if you wanted to, you could do an unfavorable, but to essentially pass judgment on it, to send it not to zoning, but to town council. The mayor will be the one that actually will sign this document that will put it into effect. If, is this timely? Does it have to be done immediately?
Yes. If you don't, the way 8-24 reviews work is that there is only a 35-day window for reviews, so from the time the applicant submitted, and if you do not vote today, they get automatically approved.
So we're basically at the end of the window?
Well, that's state statute for 8-24 reviews for principal improvements, so the date of receipt for applications is typically the date of the last month's public hearing. And from that to this day, maybe it's roughly 30 days, and we have another five days, that's all.
We can approve with conditions, correct?
Well, you can, you, you can send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation with what you think are your conditions, but-
So we could say-
This is an advisory body only, and-
We vote in favor of this, but we would like, we would, we're voting in favor of it on the assumption that you are getting clearance from Economic Development, that this is the right thing for the town to do. And we could add in something like that, if we wished. Or we could say, we're voting against it because we don't have enough information. Any discussion? Sorry?
Listen, I think based on what you just explained to us, Economic Development is in favor of this, so I don't see any reason why we can't push this through and send an approval off to town council. So I'll make that motion for a favorable recommendation to town council.
Will anybody second that?
I'll see.
Are we ready to vote? I guess we are. Correct?
So you should ask all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five. The only thing I ask is that when you, you're going to eventually go beyond the, the contract plating site into the heart of Stratford, when you go across Barnum to the, the new, our new power station. There, you're hitting in active neighborhoods. So I hope that you'll- So I hope that you'll carry back the information that we really need to know about this earlier so we can actually partner with you and help you make your job easier. So we can make sure that the people in the town are going to have the best positive reaction. I understand the need for it, it's, this is, you're part of the grid that's going to keep us going in this century.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item we have is Lyncrest Drive, the free split dedication of portion of the parcel to town. Everybody should have gotten a copy of that.
Mr. Chair, before the applicant presence, I want to give you a brief history of his visit to our office numerous times and how unfortunate a situation he's been in. According to Town of Stratford's regulations, every property owner who has not had a subdivision of his property since the date the zoning regulations were adopted by the town, which is like roughly 1965, is entitled for a free split. So when Mr. Vincenzi came to our office, he was automatically entitled to get one free split on his property. But unfortunately for him, there is a large presence of wetlands on the site and presence of wetlands on site, which limits the development potential of the lot. And in order to meet the setback requirements and zoning requirements, the applicant is required to, you know, position the proposed developments on site in a particular way so that, you know, they don't have to go through wetlands, they don't have to go through Board of Zoning Appeals for waivers, and they're still compliant with the town's zoning regulations. So Mr. Vincenzi had multiple trips with our office and he also spoke to John Casey, town engineer. And in this case, all we're looking at is a subdivision, not the proposed development. But, you know, in order for us to review subdivision, we also have to see if the proposed development roughly complies with the standards set forth in the underlying zoning district. And John Casey, the town engineer, doesn't seem to think it's a big deal to dedicate a portion of their lot, his lot, to the town to enable driveway access. And, but in his case again, even though he doesn't require a municipal eight dash twenty-four review process for the whole lot, he still needs to get that piece of the driveway onto the town records of streets. And for that to happen, he has to go through this process and go to the council, where the council would ultimately decide or accept a recommendation maybe, and then it gets onto the town street records. But it's a very, very rare case and a very unfortunate situation that his property is in, where a simple free split would have meant him not having to come to this commission and just getting it signed by the chair. That's it.
Which document are we talking about?
We're talking, I put a big-sized drawing next to you. This is the drawing that we're talking about and you can take this.
Can I, because I got mine over there.
Thank you.
Everybody? Can, can you, do you want to give us a little background on the site as you know it?
Sure.
You're the, you're the owner or the owner's son?
I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Commission and the Commission Board members. Thank you also, Sazmita, town planner, for allowing this agenda to be scheduled to tonight's meeting. So I am, my name is William Vincenzi. I am the son of Adriana Vincenzi, who is currently the owner, has been an owner of this property for many years. Prior to that, it was my father's property, who was deceased for quite a number of years. And basically, essentially what we're, all we're requesting is approval of a lot split, first lot cut of this parcel of property, which is at the end of Lyncrest Drive, which I'm not sure how familiar you've become with this parcel, but essentially we have the hardship, as Sazmita was stating, with the wetlands and the fact that we're trying to basically get approved for just the minimum amount of, or, excuse me, minimum number, I should say, of lots, buildable, approved buildable lots on this parcel. And in doing so, trying to stay within the zoning requirements as far as being approved lot, as far as setbacks, frontage, and staying within at least 50 feet of the wetland setback. So the reasoning for our requesting to deed in a right-of-way to the Town of Stratford at the end of that Lyncrest Drive, it's basically, in essence, a 20-foot-deep-by-80-foot-wide hammerhead turnaround, which would accommodate cars to be able to go, or trucks, or fire engines to go to the end of that street, emergency vehicles, and essentially be able to turn around, which right now, they pretty much cannot do because there really is no hammerhead that's large enough at the end of that street to accommodate that. So in doing this, we would be providing a benefit to the town, to the residents and people who would be driving to that end of the street who would need to turn around. Also, so in doing so, also, in deed in that portion of property as a right-of-way to the town, we would also satisfy the requirement of minimum lot frontage, which without that, deed in that right-of-way, we would only have 25 feet for each of those two lots' frontage. And so they wouldn't conform to the 50-foot minimum lot frontage requirement for an RS4 zone such as this. So therefore, in doing this, providing this turnaround hammerhead, now we're giving, we're allotting each lot 40 plus the 20 feet or 60 feet total lot frontage.
Can you help me out and tell me where you are defining the lot frontage line?
So, yes, so basically, if you look at the end of Lyncrest Drive,
Yep.
You see where it says there, there's an arrow pointing to that section that says parcel C to be deeded to the Town of Stratford, 1,600 square feet?
Right.
Okay, so essentially this, what, what, what my engineer, surveyor has shown is we've basically took the entire parcel and split it in half down the middle, parallel with the middle of Lyncrest Drive. At the begin, at the beginning of the property, at the entrance to the property, which is the end of Lyncrest Drive, you can see, if you take a look at where that hammerhead is, there's 40 feet on the horizontal boundary and then 20 feet on the vertical boundary, on the north-south boundary. And 40 feet on the east-west boundary. So in other words, 60...
So it comes out to be 60 feet.
Yeah, 40 plus 20, 60 feet.
The minimum is?
Does everyone see that, where we're showing the...
So you're saying that that and that ends up the 60 feet? And that's all the frontage that this lot has? Because that's side, 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 side.
So I have a question. So the hammerhead you're trying to create is opposite North Avenue at that very dead-end area?
Correct, yes, that's correct.
So, and you don't have enough room for a cul-de-sac, a spin-around, it's not wide enough?
No, the problem, and, and the problem with trying to do, to achieve that is in order to provide a turnaround, we would be essentially encroaching too close into the wetlands setbacks. And there, and essentially at that point, you're eating up pretty much all of the usable, buildable area of those two lots.
So if I look at this map, where you've extended Lyncrest Drive, this very end, at the top there, that's the wetland you're trying to...
No, the wetlands...
Where's North End Side, this end? In here. Where's the North End Side, this end?
North End is up this way.
Up this end, okay, North Avenue, okay.
So the, the wetlands are shown on right there, they're all flagged. You have, you have sites like this out there, and then the soil pests, you know, it's a flag.
So I'm trying to realize from my map which end is which, so... Yeah, that's North Avenue? Uh-huh. So this is the end here? That's this here. And this is where you want to develop? Okay. Okay, so this right here is that, right at the end. Okay, I was trying to figure out what was for, Mr. Chairman?
I forget when that applies.
Going forward, I see what he means, but we also need an actual map because I'm reading this going, I don't see North, I can't tell which end was which. So just looking at this blind, I couldn't tell you...
This, this property is, is landlocked, except that's the only entrance into it.
Right.
There are houses, the rest of all this land around here is the backyard of houses, completely all the way around it. So the only way you can ever get to this is going down Lyncrest.
If I may add, if you can look at the top right corner, there is the site location map and that shows where Lyncrest Drive goes and meets North Avenue.
Okay.
That gives you better bearings of where, where you're looking at.
I do have a question, so this is going to have to go before wetlands?
Well, that's exactly what Chair Watson was asking me right now when you were discussing with the applicant and where the 100-foot setback has come into picture. Because I think this regulation has been amended last year to allow for 50-foot setback and that's what I read in the regulations. Could you explain why we are using 100-foot wetland setback?
Because any structure, this, I know, any structure that falls within 100 feet, you have to still go through approval, even though the, the wetlands, the setback line, you can't have a, I'm trying to think exactly what it was because I ran into the same situation myself.
I could be wrong, but I think the difference is partially because it's woodland wetlands. So woodland wetlands has more of a, of a protected, I'm going to use beach area, I don't mean that, but it has, it has a more extended land for water filtration in order to keep that wetland healthy, that you can have that ownership of that property, but you have to keep it in a rather pristine state. My understanding, but I don't know, I think we need clarification.
Yeah, we need clarification.
So the way the regulation reads here, section 3.14, Water Body, Water Course, Wetland and Coastal Resource Protection, it says, "No new building construction, increasing building area, including minor additions to existing buildings or detached accessory buildings." And it gives examples of what those types are. "Or alteration of existing contours shall be permitted within 50 feet of the mean high water line of any water body or water course or within 50 feet of any freshwater inland wetland as defined in chapter 440 of Connecticut General Statute." So it's, it only talks about 50 feet. Now, it also mentions towards the end of that section that "no new building construction, increasing building area, including minor additions, et cetera, shall be permitted within 75 feet of the following coastal resources." And it talks about the coastal resources there, but there is no mention of 100 feet here. I do know where the confusion is coming from. I think in the past, it used to be 100 and attorney not. When I first started working here, I know we did go through that text amendment 3.14 where 100 was changed to 50 because it was practically limiting developments.
Yes, that's correct. But the way they designate it, I know the way the state of Connecticut typically designates it is that what, the 50 feet is the actual wetland setback and then the 100 feet from 50 to 100 is considered the buffer area or wet, up, wetland, upland review area.
Yes.
So, and typically what has been the case in the past in most subdivisions in the state, from what I've seen, they have allowed structures to be built within the 50-to-100-foot setback of a wetland. Also, just, just to familiarize you with this wetland, it's, this wetland is not any particular body of water where it's of importance. It's not a stream or a pond, lake, or not connected to any body of water. It's essentially what it, what it is is, it's been a low-depressed area just for many years of all the surrounding homes that have been built within the past 75 to 100 years surrounding that property. And so as a result, the, that, that lower depressed area has always, in the wintertime, seen a little bit of standing puddles there. But it's, it's not a important or significant body of water connected to any stream or a book of any sorts. It's just, exactly, a low-depressed area that has collected rainwater over the years and surface runoff.
I'll have to look it up.
Excuse me? There is, yes, there is sewer and water and gas line up to the end of Lyncrest Drive, as far as we're concerned. Which we would be, yes, they would be tapping into, yeah, all public utilities would be tapped into. And any, any, the way we would grade this, this property after building the two, those two homes there, we would basically grade to drain everything shedding back to the, recharging the wetland that exists, which is why they showed those arrows, my, my engineer showed those arrows pointing away from that turnaround, going down, basically to indicate that any, any roof leader drains and surface runoff would be directed back towards the, recharging the wetland.
So you propose to build two homes on this property?
Our, our new M4, what's it called, our new waste discharge permit?
MS4 permit.
Our MS4 permit would, I think, would look at this and say that you would need to put in non-imperious surfaces in here because of that, because of that 100 feet, that you, you couldn't get away with just putting asphalt in here. You'd have to put something, either gravel, that could, that you could create drainage in this, in this 100-feet area. And there might be some difficulty with grading that area in that second 50 feet. So, but I think what you've laid out is a possible way to make this happen. And I think as a planning commission, our job here is not to, you're not bringing us a plan for building. You essentially are bringing us a request to simply allow you to deed us this piece of property. It is no guarantee that you're going to have a buildable lot here. So that's all that we're really voting on right now. Eventually, you're going to have, essentially you will come back, are we, we're not even dividing the lot, are we?
Well, as I said, he's entitled for one free split. So it's technically not a subdivision because our subdivision regulations define a subdivision as three or more lots and he's only dividing it into two lots.
Technically only three? If we're, if we're deed in this portion of the town, aren't we doing three?
No, he's still dedicating a portion of his lot, but he's not subdividing it. And regarding development, yes, we are not reviewing development here today, but at the same time, when he comes back for the commission chair signature, the regulations, by the way, require the commission chair to sign off on any free splits. So moving forward, like if it's not an unusual case, it won't be even brought to the commission for discussion. I'll just bring the map and at the end of the meeting or at the beginning of the meeting, I will let the commission chair know that this meets their standards and, you know, we're comfortable in signing off so that they can file the Mylar with the town clerk. In his case, we won't be signing off on the Mylar if his proposed lots are, you know, proposed buildings are not compliant... if his proposed lots are, you know, proposed buildings are not compliant with the setbacks. Because we don't want to end up in a situation where we approve the free split, and then months down the lane, somebody comes back and wants to build something, and they're doing something that does not abide by our regulations. So we'd still have to make sure that it meets, uh, regulations, and if it meets a wetlands approval, it'll still have to go through wetlands. In his case, they have met all the standards. And, uh, John Casey seems to believe that this was workable, engineering-wise. And as town planner, I'm comfortable looking at this and saying, "Yes, this meets the standards of the zoning book."
Yes, and, and of course, uh, just to add to that, Sismeetho, this, you know, this, these are not, this is not the actual final proposed, uh, setup of buil- of ho- homes that would be obviously built there. It's, it's all dependent on the person, whoever it is that's buying this, is gonna be buying the parcel of property from us. He's a local builder here in town, reputable builder, has been here for many years, and I'm sure he would be making sure that, uh, all, all the requirements, uh, as far as building and, and, and engineering and, and wetlands would be, uh, met, as far as, uh, getting any kind of approvals for actual building. But basically, what we're trying to achieve is just to, for the, requesting that the commission approve, uh, the lot split into two approved buildable lots.
And, um, Commission Chair, Chair Watson has brought an interesting question. Does the applicant have to come back to us or not, when they're doing a development? Technically, like any other resident in town, they have to apply for a building permit. And the building permit goes through review from, uh, various departments, um, in our viewpoint. So the zoning department also takes a look at, um, the compliance with the standards. When the potential developer, uh, comes to build a lot that is not complying with the standards, we immediately point out, and that has to go through, you know, whatever variance procedures, um, that the town has. And if they intend to build, they have to build in those parameters, or they can't. They can't get a sign off from the zoning department.
May I ask one?
Go ahead.
So the, um, the drain, which you indicated the arrows, uh, coming down, boundary lines proposed, with the split, the, um, so what goes on in the future will be looked at again. Whoever decides to build, what they build, if it impacts the neighboring properties.
Right.
Absolutely.
I have a question, and, and I don't know if this is absolutely germane to everything you're asking. When I was looking at the property, there are two st- uh, stormwater drains right at the edge of either part, part of this parcel.
Yes, correct.
That's a hill going down. My assumption is that those drains must empty into this, into this wetland.
No, they actually don't.
So that, that's my question, do you know where they actually...
I know the hel- the whole history behind this. My father, who was a builder, who's deceased many years ago, he actually extended, back in the mid-eighties, Lynncrest Drive, to build two raised ranches on either side. And when he did that, the town required him to add two more storm drains on either side of the street, in addition to the, uh, at the time, the, the two current existing storm drains that were on either side of Lynncrest Drive. So basically, he extended the street, extended the sidewalk, and added two more storm drains. Those two storm drains actually are piped back to the older original storm drains, which then go off through one of the side properties going towards, I believe it's Spring Street?
Spring Street.
Yes.
Because you had mentioned that the wetlands there are subject, are basically wet when there is neighborhood excess water flow.
Well, there's really no surface runoff per se from Lynncrest Drive onto the property. It's basically whatever, from whatever surface runoff that exists within that, this wooded property, which the entire property is wooded, it's been that way.
So it's seasonal wetlands? And, and that's what it would probably be called technically, is seasonal wetlands?
Correct. Yes, it's seasonal wetland. Um, but there is no visible, uh, wet runoff or sheet flow of any sort from Lynncrest Drive, uh, onto our property.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Just a point of clarification of what exactly it is that we're going to be voting on?
We are going to essentially...
Split.
The split.
Approve a split and approve the, um, his deed of that, uh, point, point oh-three acres of land to the town for eventually extending, what I would assume would be an extension of Lynncrest Drive. Am I correct?
Yes. We didn't have to vote on the split, because it's a free split.
It is already, it already is a split.
I, I mean, he's entitled to one cut without having a subdivision process, and it technically...
So we're not voting then, um, split?
No. On the eight dash twenty-four part of it, which is the dedication to the town.
Yeah. That's all we're voting for.
I'll make that motion.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll second it.
And, um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No? We hope we make your life a little easier.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
We have no five-point-three zoning regs, we have no erosion and sediment control, we have no bond requests, we have no implementation plans, um, what else do we have? All of our other items, and these items were added to the list by the previous commissioners. So these items can change, correct? If we vote to add something that we want to keep tabs on.
I do have a question on one item.
Yes.
Other items. Uh, text amendment, section four, one, three, uh, commercial kitchen table?
Yes.
How long can we keep this table?
Um, the reason this was tabled is because this needs a bigger discussion. You cannot just allow or disallow a commercial kitchen, uh, like a text amendment, because the underlying plan of conservation and development does not address this at all. And I'm thinking, um, either the town has to conduct a study to understand, you know, urban agriculture, and see, you know, where this kind of commercial kitchens fit into the larger vision of the town. Or maybe when we update our P O C D, that's when we bring this up as a new topic, up an emerging topic. Because you cannot propose zoning for something that is not addressed in your plan of conservation and development. There is no legal basis for doing this. It may be called a spot zoning. Uh, it may be, you know, contested by, you know, people who are against it. So we have to be very careful, um, before we take up that text amendment, because there is no vision that was discussed with the larger town residents.
Should we delete this from our list?
I kept it on there as a reminder for us. When we start our P O C D process, we definitely won't miss this, and we'll put it on our list of items to discuss in our P O C D.
It's a valid concern for us to keep thinking about, because there are people in this town, that is their way to start businesses. It's, it's a proven way, the many people that are bakers and chefs and everything else, that, that's how they start, in their own kitchens. So the more that we can make that a possibility, a safe poss- possibility, the better we are at actually creating a new way of...
My only concern was how long it's been on table for so long?
Yes.
At least a year.
Yeah.
This, um, just so you know, commercial kitchens are allowed in single-family residential areas. They're not allowed in multifamily, because of valid concerns, um, that, uh, if somebody's allergic to noise or odor in multifamily, that might affect them. It could be a life-threatening issue for somebody else. So, um, there was this lady, uh, who was very interested in doing something out of her apartment home, who proposed this text amendment, and, uh, you know, it's a valid concern for her. But at the same time, we do not have underlying vision in the town for that type of developments in multifamily. Mm-hmm.
And I, just had, I think, from our previous discussions, we, we talked about the health department...
Yeah.
Getting involved in bringing them in and seeing what their overall concerns were. So, there's a lot, there is a lot...
I did speak with the health department staff by phone, and that's, you know, they resonated the same concerns that the fire has, in terms of, you know, what happens when there's a fire in the commercial kitchen? If you're in multifamily, the whole building gets blown off, as opposed to just treating with one particular part of the home. And the fire axes and things like that, and it's a bigger topic. And unfortunately, this is not as easy fix, like section three point one four.
Mike. If we want to talk about something that's tabled, you need to take a vote to remove it from the table, and there needs to be a vote on that.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to take this off the table and discuss it? Okay, let's take a quick vote, all in favor of taking it off the table?
Sure.
All opposed? We have two in favor, so I don't know if that allowed us to talk about it. Um, okay, let's move on then. Let, let's move on then, shall we? Um, the only thing you, you have there still is bike parking.
Um, I can walk through the other items quickly. The second one, MetroCog Bike Share. Uh, I'm in conversations, um, with our regional transit agency and, um, staff, uh, at MetroCog to see how we can promote regional bike share, um, in MetroCog region, which comprises of six municipalities, including Stratford. And, um, we are talking to vendors, potential vendors, um, like Bird and others, who typically do this kind of business across the country. Um, the challenges we are facing right now is that, um, you know, our market as an individual community is, could be probably seen as too small for a potential vendor to come and do the bike share program. But if we want to expand the market, some municipalities are ready, whereas some are not that yet ready, and some had just recent change in administrations, where their new political party has to be brought up to speed on this project. So, in spite of all this, uh, we're trying to figure out a way to move this forward, because our town has expressed interest in bike share, and adding some bikes at key locations where people can rent a bike, and, you know, do that last-mile connection between their work, home, and other trips. Um, but the town has definitely said no to scooters, um, because of the liability involved, um, and also because the, of the challenges that a person faces during snowstorms, uh, and, and in terms of cleaning. So, um, that's the town's position, and I am diligently working with our partners on this to see how we can progress forward as soon as we can on this issue. The third item is the discussion of Shakespeare property. I'm not sure if you've been following this news lately, that we just started our Shakespeare subcommittee process recently. We had a meeting, in fact, last week, and, uh, we've, um, discussed about, there's a new committee that was assigned with a task of exploring three options for the site. Um, the first one is whether, all these three options have come out of the visioning process that we held in the first phase, um, last year around this time. We had nearly thousand residents participate in this process, and they expressed that they would like to see either a multifamily facility, or an amphitheater, or a black box, or some people said, "We just want to keep it as open space and just have some improvements done, so people can host festivals." So based on the buckets of responses received, we synthesized those options to three. One is either have a multifamily facility, I'm sorry, multi-use facility, uh, sorry about that. The second one is, that is not allowed in the deed, by the way, multifamily is, is not allowed at all. And the second one is to purely expose the, I'm sorry, I don't know what's happening to my English today, explore the open space option. And the third one is to look at a combination of, you know, some facility that's indoor and some outdoor. So, um, the subcommittee members decided that they would go visit other towns, uh, or other areas where they have these kind of facilities that are of similar demographic, and bring back their knowledge on what it costs and what it takes to do something like that in Stratford, and how best should the town proceed? Should it, you know, what, uh, whether it would need a public-private partnership or just a private partnership? We don't know at this point, and that's the type of expertise the subcommittee will bring to the, uh, committee members as a whole, who will then vote on it and pass this on to the redevelopment agency for their consideration, and ultimately to the town council. So that's the status of that. Any questions? Okay. It did not require any shows there, any Shakespeare shows. It only said that it has to be used for public purposes, and solely for an open space and entertainment and other similar type of uses, and not for any commercial or residential purposes.
Back to the bike share?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there are no bike lanes, so to have a bike share, wouldn't you have to establish bike lanes?
Yes, and these are all concurrent efforts. It's like, shall we put the cart before the horse, or horse before the cart? So it's like, we are right now in our phase one of our complete streets. Harold Watson is, um, part of both our Complete Streets Committee and the Greenway Committee. And, um, the phase one of Complete Streets is from Harvey Place, a little, um, beyond West Broad, all the way to Barnum Avenue. And we have had preliminary concept plans done by consultants, um, uh, B S C Group. And we are right now, um, you know, waiting for a commitment to fund letter from, um, the D O T, and Office of Policy and Management. Actually, D O T is going to give us commitment to fund from their, um, different funding pool called Lotsip. And, um, we are also, this preliminary work has been granted through Office of Policy and Management, so we have to satisfy both of their requirements. So we're juggling between O P M and D O T right now. And once this, we are hoping that we will get a commitment to fund in the next one month or two months. Once we get that, we'll go, get into the more technical engineering phase, when we have the bike lanes and pedestrian walkways on Main Street.
Right, because my concern is, there's a bottleneck right there with the train bridge. Everything condenses, and you can't get cars, pedestrians through there.
And we are figuring out a solution for that.
And shorten that to, at a bike lane, it's, it's already congested. It squeezes down to then open up.
In some places where you cannot have enough road width to accommodate it on road, we are looking at options where we probably could do it off-road, maybe take it on to those ramps to the side, and possibly paint a portion of that, uh, ramp as bikes only, or have some signage there. I mean, this is all, um, pretty preliminary and in a very initial stage of discussions. Once we get to the, once we get the commitment to fund letter, um, the consultants will go back and do a more detailed technical designs and show you illustrations of what we are thinking in those areas where you cannot accommodate bikes on road. And you will have an opportunity to give your feedback and comment on those. But essentially, what I'm trying to say is, we are thinking about bike network, not just in the complete streets, but also about the greenway. We have Hispanic River Greenway, which is already there. We have the second phase that went out to bid from all the way, um, Beacon Point Road to Elm Street and connecting to Broad, with, to the Complete Streets area. Now, um, the Greenway Committee will be meeting shortly, in the first quarter again, and maybe possibly discussing the third phase, because they just voted on the second phase bidding at their last meeting. And in, other than all this too, there is, I think, um, there's ways that, you know, the residential neighborhoods can accommodate bikes, bicycles, without even having any paint on them, because some of these streets don't even have, um, sidewalks, and they don't even have on-street parking. And so it's convenient for a bicyclist to ride through the residential areas and connect to these, you know, bicycle and greenway networks, and then come to the center of the town.
Right, because my concern is, is you're coming down Main Street from Barnum, if there was some kind of looparound behind the train station and end up back there, and then back on to Main Street, because you just cannot do anything where that train...
But you would be surprised to see what the consultants are suggesting. There are ways you can do it, and ways you can do it very safely, uh, right in front of the train station. the train station. And there's an advantage to connect to the train station.
Right, I can see the advantage. I'm just concerned because if you leave at five o'clock, try to get through there, it's impossible. And you add more bodies to the road, yeah.
When are the committee meetings for complete streets?
We haven't started the second phase yet. The first phase has been done even before I joined office here. And we were just doing the background engineering work and all. So we are waiting for that commitment to fund. Once we get that letter, we can start our second phase and then we can have a public, you know, involvement process. My questions on both those items. So when I sent to you a package of this month's meeting, I also said that I would request each of you to come up with five topics of interest for you all, so we can pick and choose from those. The reason being that as a department, as technical staff, we also, you know, have, you know, having read the P O C D, the Plan of Conservation and Development and looking at all the ongoing planning that's going on, we do believe that there are certain priorities that we have to take up right now before, you know, we realize that we are moving on to something else. There are some items that are equally relevant but may not be, you know, a high priority according to the way, you know, the P O C D has been written. So when I brought these two items on here, the village overlay district for commercial corridors and bike parking for preliminary discussion only today, the reason we as staff think that these two are a priority is because we have a transit-oriented district in the town right now and developments are actually happening and people are actually coming with, you know, 100 units, 50 units, sometimes more, sometimes less. But when I counted how many developments were approved in the town since 2015, when the TOD plan was undertaken and the zoning district was adopted in 2016, we have nearly 500 units that were approved or planned. And none of them required bike parking in them. We have a TOD district, we are encouraging transit-oriented district. And that, again, connects to Mr. Boyd's question about, we are requiring bike share, we are requiring bike lanes, but where would these people park? And somebody has rightly brought this to our attention, they wrote a letter to the staff and I enclosed it in the package, saying that we need bike racks at some retail locations in the town for which we need a regulation to allow bicycle parking on private properties. And to require them to do that, right now we can't ask a developer to say, can you eliminate two parking spaces and provide three bike racks? Unless it's addressed in the regulation, you cannot require. The second one on commercial corridors, I have, you know, given a map today, early before the meeting started, and I, you know, drew the connections. And if you take a look at the connections that I've drawn on that colored map, which I gave, you know, right before the meeting started, which I don't have. I think I don't have it too, for myself, actually. Yes, I can share that. Can I, can I just share that with them and you guys can share that map? If you have more than one.
Keep looking, I might find it.
Can you, can you both share one and then pass one more? You both can take a look at this. Do you guys have one? And how many maps do you guys have, Christina? Can we please get one, so you guys can share one? Yes.
I'll keep looking through my pile, I might find it.
And then you can pass one to them, so we can.
I know I can.
So this is the map and I'm going to just refer it like this. If you see, everything in yellow is our TOD district. But from our TOD district to Paradise Green, you know, it's essentially continuation of Main Street. If we did some kind of commercial corridor overlay there, do not propose this, the density that's in the TOD. The TOD requires, you know, a much higher density as of right now. As you're closer to a train station, it is higher, but, you know, even moving away. But maybe at least requiring, you know, a uniform Main Street to Paradise Green to build that commercial character to the town, making it a valid town center. And having maybe, you know, my vision for this, mine and Jay Hibansky, planning and zoning administrator, we were discussing it and we were thinking, maybe having two-story style buildings with some retail office allowed in the ground floor and residential on the top. Right now you do see two-story structures there that are sometimes, in some locations residential, in some locations they're office uses. So making it like a really, making it like a Connecticut Main Street. I don't know if you've seen Connecticut Main Streets. We have very good examples, if you browse on the web, that's a place for gathering for people, it's a place-making element and it adds to the vibrancy of the town center. And then moving south, extending it way beyond Hart's Corner and looping it near Two Roads. So that, and that is because there is an opportunity for more development along that corridor.
On which road?
Stratford Avenue and, you know, looping it all the way back and saying, okay, our main street or our town center is from Paradise Green all the way to Hart's Corner and it ends somewhere, you know, beyond Two Roads. And if you are all agreeable with this, this will be the first step. And eventually building on the success of this, on how this is being perceived, maybe our second step is to look at other commercial corridors in the town like Barnum Avenue, like Honey Spot Road, Lot Ship. And, you know, right now some of these corridors are having only, you know, low-density, one-story developments with a large amount of surface parking. Sometimes, you know, you feel like it is more auto-centric than pedestrian-oriented and that could be a larger conversation in the future. But for this year, this is a lot to discuss. Because in the package that I had sent to you, we did have a list of questions for stakeholders, which means that we have to reach out to all the stakeholders in these areas and talk to them, find out if they're agreeable to this, know what their concerns are, know what our limitations are, develop some standards, bring it before our boards and commissions and discuss with our, you know, not just the planning commission, but also bringing zoning commission up to speed, and which Jay will be doing simultaneously with the zoning commission because he staffs the zoning commission. And making sure that everyone's on the same page before we actually formally propose a regulation for these corridors before the zoning commission. And I think this is a priority too because of the development potential that these corridors have, yes.
So we're saying right now, Main Street, I'll call it Paradise, Paradise Main Street. We're talking about Stratford Avenue to, essentially to Two Roads.
Yes.
And those are the two corridors we're talking about?
Yes.
Are we talking, we're not talking about Barnum Avenue?
Not right now, because, you know, that would, we would need more staff to do that. And that's like, we can't be having, we did talk about Barnum in our last month, but then we went back to the drawing board again and we thought, what is the most logical right now? If we extend it, because I'm pretty sure our phase two of complete streets would go all the way to Paradise. So it only is making, going to make more sense to actually extend a commercial corridor district in that pattern towards Paradise Green to, you know, have that street scape for the whole street. And then near Stratford Avenue, you already have a successful TOD development and, but on one side of the street, but on the other side of the street, there is opportunity there for Hart's Corner, you know, to build something like your town center where you have sea bistro's and other restaurants to make, you know, have wider sidewalks where people can sit during nice weather and have coffee and maybe reconfigure that lot a little bit. Not that it'll automatically happen, it may not happen, but you're ensuring that the tools are in place if a developer were to go ahead and do something in the near future. And again, I, we, we do understand that as a commission, you have certain interests and you want to push some items planning-wise. So if you let us know what your priorities are, we can start working on those as well. Not that, you know, we'll have to prioritize and then move forward because we only have two people who do planning in our office and.
So just a comment, because I, I know we talk about this a lot. You know, we look at our borders and you look at Shelton, you look at Milford, and you look at those particular areas that as far as development is concerned. And you look at Stratford and the one thing we're really missing the bone on is, you know, do we have any fine restaurants that be, now you go out of town to go to a good restaurant, you know? I mean, it's only been really the last couple of, couple of months where we've got a couple of new restaurants that are, that are, that are good. I wouldn't say they're great, but they're good. But when you look at the, the Main Street corridor, the problem I think that we run into is you've got a lot of mixed residential with, with commercial when you go up to, to Paradise Green, which is, you know, which is an issue. And then, you know, the main corridor where people are really coming through is Barnum Avenue, I think, more so than anything. So, I mean, you know, I've lived in this town for over 50 years and as far as, you know, when you see these other towns doing what they're doing, and especially you look at Shelton right now and you go on Bridgeport Avenue, you say, holy, you know, this is unbelievable, the amount of businesses and everything else that's going on there, you know? Unfortunately, we don't have that large strip of land to develop, so it's a challenge. It's a real challenge for us. But I think we got, we've come to the point where, I know as a resident, I'm almost sick of talking about it all the time. It's like, when are we going to, you know, Shakespeare, okay, we're going to have a committee and another committee and another committee and another committee and, you know, it's, it's some of the challenges that we face and, you know, I'm a firm believer of doing things other, rather than talking about it. And I think we need to be a little more progressive in our approach. And instead of forming all these committees and everything else and trying to come up with a good solution, we need to pick one or two things, as you said, and do it. Instead of coming out with 15 different items and trying to, trying to decide on what you want to do. It's, it's, it's challenging. And I know on this, this, we've talked about this as far as our, this, this group right here with planning, you know, we really have no autonomy, you know? That's, that's another issue that we talk about. Yeah, we, you know, everything has to go to, for approval either to zoning or to the town council. And that can be a little discerning too because, you know, sometimes I think we make good decisions and then all of a sudden you find out through zoning that something that we approved got shot down. So I know I'm hitting on a bunch of different things, but I would just like to see us be a little more progressive in, in our approach. And I appreciate everything that you've done in your short period of time because I think it's, you know, it's necessary for us. And I think people are, throughout town, become disheartened of the fact that we can't shop within our own town and we can't enjoy our own town with all the different things that we have to offer, so.
Unlike Dan, I have not lived here for 50 years, I've only lived here for about five. But one of the reasons I chose to buy a home here was because I knew just from my time working in Town Hall that there was forward-thinking happening around TOD. And having sort of been here at the ground floor of that, it was exciting to see interest in, in moving forward those principles. And I, I felt like this was a good investment for me because we finally had some, you know, forward-thinking on this issue, you know, to get the ball rolling. And here we are almost 11 years later, from that very first grant that we got to do those neighborhood charrettes and, and planning meetings. And it's, what has happened has been encouraging, but it has been glacial, or at least it feels like it's been glacial. So I, I agree that I would like to see us, and to your point about us not really sort of having the power that we would like to have on this, I think it then puts us in the unique position of using these microphones as soapboxes with which we can say loudly what we, what we do and do not want to see. So I would also add that in terms of priorities as, as the representative for the, the district that includes Lordship and a lot of our coastal communities, that coastal resiliency and hazard mitigation in particular is of concern to me. A lot of residents, in my door knocking during the campaign, have voiced to me their concern about what's going to happen specifically in Lordship, when, not if, but when the sea rises. So I would like to, and I know that you guys have been doing a lot of work in, on that already, but I would like to see that continue to be a focus for, not just for commercial properties, but residential and for our infrastructure, our public infrastructure. The last thing, I didn't do five, sorry, I'm just doing three. But the last thing I would like to see us address is the issue of, since affordable housing has such a negative connotation for a lot of people, I will say economically accessible housing.
Workforce housing is a better term.
Yeah, or workforce housing. Thank you. I, I would like to see this body in your office look at this issue seriously considering, you know, when we, when we ask ourselves, you know, who are we as a community? In the 21st century, we are very much a community influx between people who have made Stratford their home for decades and people like me who are newcomers. You know, if you can still consider five years a newcomer, but I think you can't. But there, when you look at, when you look at the unaffordability of housing in Fairfield County in general, Stratford seems to be one of the last bastions of affordable, of truly affordable housing. And I'd like to see us address that issue from a new development perspective and from what that impact and the social impact of that on existing single-family homes is going to be moving forward.
To follow Dan, I do go to Shelton quite often. Their strip is pretty sizable and growing. Milford, the topography is, I mean, they have some of everything. And I drive through Stratford trying to figure out where could you put what, what could you do? And one thing I have noticed is the area where Bally's used to be, the movie theater LA Fitness, that back end of land is just, is just a nothing there. And I see people cross over, they park and they cross over to go to the train station. To me, that's a developing area that could be developed back there with housing, I guess I'll use that one too, workforce housing, it sounds better. But there has to be more housing because if you don't have people in town, there's going to be no need for schools because the people in town aren't having children. So if you have schools with no children, then what do you have? So there's got to be an influx of newer people, as much as some of the townspeople may, you know, really not like that, there has to be an influx of younger blood to then rent those apartments, bike to work, marry, then buy those houses that the seniors are no longer able to afford. And you get that natural progression and like the gentleman said, going to eat, if you think about going to eat, you don't even think about Stratford. And to me, that's still like unbelievable, I'm going to Milford, I'm going to Fairfield, I'm going to Shelton. Oh, yeah, I could go to Stratford, but I live here, like, why would I be going somewhere else? So there's got to be an area where there's behind, where 99 is, whether we develop something at Shakespeare, like Quincy Market in Boston, something's got to be a draw to Stratford. Lordship Boulevard, it's an easy sell, it's right off the highway, it's a thoroughfare, so it's not, there's never really any traffic there. There's land on either side, especially going up, there's a whole, a sign on the left side when you're going north, it's just waiting to be developed. And it goes all the way back. I'm thinking, there's got to be something you can do with that. We can't be that closed-minded that we can't think outside. We can't be that closed-minded that we can't think outside of the box. And I think one reason why I joined the Planning Commission is, if Sikorsky left, there would be no Stratford. There's gotta be an increase of the tax base, the grand list, on other things, instead of one here, a couple there, and then hodgepodge of things in the middle. There's gotta be a devised plan to say, "Okay, in the next five years," not ten or twenty, "in the next five, we must do this in order to do this." We're building a new Stratford High School. Where are the kids gonna go to that high school? I mean, you gotta have some kind of influx. And as Christina said, I'm from Stanford, and it's just, it's exploded, but I've watched some of what they've done. They've overbuilt, if you get to it. But we can take some of the cues of Stanford, Shelton, Milford, they're all telling us certain things, but I think it takes a change in mind of what we think Stratford is and what we want it to be. And hopefully, I don't have my top five yet, but, I don't even know if I have five, maybe a good three. But I think if we can do more forward-thinking, like the gentleman said, not to keep quoting you, Dan, but some of the sub-sub-subcommittees, it's, we're doing one, two, three, four, five, and hammer those five and hand it off to zoning and different things, Town Council. Maybe they'll go, "Hmm, you know, that's a good idea," and then develop some of these things, as opposed to, we got fingers and everything, and nothing's really getting done as quickly as it should be. That's my point. Thank you.
Do you like to say something?
To comment on Shelton, I know a number of people that live in Shelton that really hate what has happened there, all the overdevelopment that's going on. They've lost their town, and they want to move out. They hate it. And my comments on TOD and this village district, I don't have any personal thing against the TOD, I just think five hundred apartments isn't what we had in mind. I think the density of the apartments, like the ones they just built on Ferry Boulevard, seventy units, across the street from there, they're two and a hundred, over on Stratford Avenue, I mean, just, it's surrounding this, what used to be a gorgeous historical district. And I personally, from decades back when I was on the council, had the historical district in my district. And the people that live in that area are very passionate about the charm and character of our town, so am I. So, to put up these big, ugly apartment buildings, to me, it's kind of ruining the character of our town. If we did this village concept, I get how you want to extend the TOD, but the density, to me, needs to be much smaller and more charming. I mean, we're gonna lose the whole character of our town, and that really disturbs me. And the bike thing that I read from that guy, I get that we're trying to do, you know, less cars and whatever, fewer cars. I'm not in favor of ordering people to put bike things on their retail establishments. I mean, I can see in the apartments, if we're gonna really have a TOD, and there's an apartment building suggesting having bike racks, that would be good for the people that live there. But people that go shopping, like, I'm not gonna ride my bike to a grocery store and carry groceries home. I'm not gonna go shopping at Marshalls or BJ's and have all these bags. How are you gonna ride a bike? So, to really insist through zoning regulation that stores have bike racks, I think that's just over-government, in my opinion.
I agree, and, you know, I think when we look at bike parking, we'll look at models from nearby towns and see what has worked successfully, and then incorporate that. So, chances are, maybe developments of certain size would be required, not every single retail store. But to your point, I do understand where you're trying to, you know, set the parameters in terms of, you know, government taking over too much or too little.
Maybe they suggested a certain number of bike spaces for every number of car spaces. I mean, that's...
Well, I think if you go, I mean, I have seen, I've physically seen people trying to run over from Milford Post Mall to the opposite side of the street with bags in their hands. And I've seen that our takeout restaurants right now, before they fixed the regulation last year, was requiring some, like, nine spaces or something like that. I mean, I was too early on in this department at that time, and there was a guy who came, and I'm like, "It's just a takeout for a Chinese restaurant. I could use a bike with a bag to take the food out." I mean, places like takeouts could have a bike. And the whole point about why we are trying to do TOD is not to build the tax base or the density. But when we spoke to developers, I mean, in my experience in working with New Haven, and in my experience in working here, I'm also on a task force on promoting affordable housing development in Fairfield County, and they invited all these expert developers, popular developers, and asked, "What is it that attracts you to these towns?" And they kept saying that, first of all, the transit element is missing in the transit-oriented development. And when you talk to the transit agencies, they say, "For us to service transit, to have more frequent, reliable transit service, we need ridership." And you don't have the ridership that's needed. You don't have the desired density. So, I'm investing in X number of buses, but if out of the X, like, ten buses, seven buses are running, like, empty almost throughout the day, they're getting, you know, the service doesn't lend itself to add more frequent service or more reliable service there. So, this is whole cycle. And like, coming to housing point, the reason why we are trying to mix housing with transit is because housing is also considered infrastructure now. Housing is not a standalone element like it used to be before. And there are so many people that are traveling from one location to the other location. Jobs are not concentrated at one place. Unfortunately, in Connecticut, it's more prevalent than in other towns or other states, and, I'm sorry, not other towns. So, when people have to commute these spaces, the number of auto trips that are generated are increasing the carbon footprint, and they're causing more greenhouse gas pollution, they're using more resources. The state and the federal government is unable to pay for those services and newer needs of infrastructure. So, we wanna concentrate the developments in places where the infrastructure can support those kind of developments and not, you know, scatter it, like promotes sprawl, like it used to happen a few decades ago. Like, everybody wanted a quadraker of a lot, and that was convenient for paying the bills for some people, but it's not anymore the case for most people in the state. So, some of the reasons why we are promoting TOD is to make housing and jobs access easy, to reduce carbon footprint, to increase transit service, to make sure that the number of trips that a person is taking is limited. And not for, you know, you don't have to take your car out for every single trip. That's the whole point behind it.
And I get that, but I believe in the regulations, it requires mixed use. And the apartments that are going up all over the place don't have mixed use.
Yes, and that's because of the way our retail industry is working right now. I mean, I just heard, yesterday I was at Showcase Cinemas in Bridgeport, that's my favorite place to go to, because I see all Indian movies there, and they said we are shutting down now, because everybody's seeing movies online. And that's the way, you know, there is a shift in retail that's happening at the moment, and, you know, we have to catch up with the trend, planning-wise. And I do get your concerns, and definitely they're valid concerns, and we must address it, so we don't fall into this trap where we're overbuilding only residential. And that's why, too, a workforce housing study is important, to understand what our absorption rate is like. How much can we contain? How many of these units will be actually occupied in five years from now and not remain vacant? And how many of these are affordable for the town residents? And how many of these can be made available for new influx population? Regarding the historic district, I have seen developments that have followed historic guidelines. And if it is in a historic district, you can require a historic district review, a local historic district, and you could actually enable the developments to follow a particular style of development that...
But particularly from Stratford Center to Harpwood Corner, that whole street is gorgeous.
Yes, and it should definitely, and every effort must be made to maintain the character. I'm a strong believer, and I think the reason why people visit these places that have some character in them is because of, you know, the preservation of historic character of those areas. So, when you go to some towns, you have these cool town centers where you have all these neat mom-and-pop stores, you have really cool historical elements, and people love that. You don't want to have, you know, something that's out of scale and out of character with the historic elements that are in the town.
And then, last thing, something you brought up, Barnum Ave., which is a mishmash of every ugly thing that you could think of, that I think, in my opinion, would be a much better place to start, if we wanted to have some kind of continuity of look and design and a village feel.
I understand. And I spoke to one of my peers in the profession regarding this, who's a very good consultant, and he told me that the economics of Barnum Avenue may not allow it to work right away. Like, if a developer has to keep his property, you know, for sixteen months, turn it over to development and not have a valid retail use in that site, he would get broke. So, he has to think of an alternative in the meantime while he's redesigning his site. And even if he did something right now, he, I don't know if the economics would work. But along Main Street, there is an opportunity for people, you know, who want to expand a little bit on their footprint or to build up a little bit. I mean, it's easily doable, and maybe that's why, and also because, at the end of the day, we want one Main Street in the town that the town is proud of. You come to a town center between Paradise Green and this, this is our town center. This is what we call our town center. And, you know, giving that one uniform, you know, character to the town. Barnum Avenue, I mean, you will be surprised, I mean, maybe as an outsider, I bring this perception, you may be thinking that Barnum Avenue is mishmash, but I am so happy to see very few vacant retail there. Out of all the things happening, very few retail, vacant retail. Everything is occupied. Everything is thriving. Yeah, because you go into some of these towns, most of the retail users are closing, because people are going online, and you still have businesses thriving, people going to these places. And you, the fact that you do have your residential interspersed with your commercial office uses is a good sign that your town center is not literally dead in the evenings after five o'clock. I have been in a town, I worked as an intern, where, you know, you go after five, there's no, not a single body in the town center.
Downtown Bridgeport. I mean, yeah. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that, that point is incredibly important. There is a sweet spot between, when you look at mixed-use development, where, so, I used to live in downtown Bridgeport for about five years, and during that time, one of the biggest complaints was, "There's not enough to do. There's restaurants, but there's no grocery store." And now you've got over two thousand people living downtown, and you need a grocery store. Well, they put in a grocery store into one of those vacant spots, and it closed within six months. Why? Because there wasn't enough, there wasn't enough density there yet. There wasn't, there weren't enough bodies actually living in downtown to be able to support the small businesses on those ground, in those mixed-use developments on the ground floor. So, are, you know, when people say, like, you know, I've heard your, you know, the concern that you voiced before about, you know, none of these developments are including mixed use, they're all residential, well, we've gotta actually have people living in Stratford Center at a higher density than we have, that to be able to support those ground-floor businesses. Otherwise, we're gonna end up like downtown Bridgeport, that has a huge vacancy rate right now. I mean, there have been vacancies for ten, fifteen years in some of those developments, just because there just aren't enough bodies either, you know, before five o'clock or after five o'clock to sustain them. Having said all that, to your point, if we had a grocery store south of Stratford Avenue, I would totally ride my bike to it. So, put that on your list, if that's in your purview. And I also have to say that the issue of bike racks is never just about bike racks. It's about, this issue is about using government regulation responsibly to articulate a vision for a town, to articulate an expectation of what a town is going to be and look like for its residents ten, twenty, fifty years down the road. So, while we may not have ridership now, and while we may seem like, it may look like overreach at this point, if our vision and our goal is to create a community where alternative methods of transportation are preferred, not just, we hope you use it, that they're preferred, then bike racks are just one small thing that we can do. They are low-cost, you can probably figure out a creative way to subsidize it. You know, I know that the person who wrote the letter had suggested that when people go in for, or businesses go in for a building permit, that that has to be a condition of receiving a building permit. What about giving them a break on the permit cost, you know, in order to facilitate the bike rack? You know, there are creative ways to be able to do it, but I do, you know, with all due respect, disagree that it's government overreach. Government is the only thing that can mandate the correct vision for a town, especially with something like TOD. And if we can do it, let's do it.
Well, we'll definitely look into other models. So, at this point, I don't myself know what other towns like Milford or Fairfield require in terms of their bike parking regulations, and definitely look into those and see what is the size and scale of developments from which they're requiring these. I know what they do in New Haven, but maybe that's not something that Stratford would like to see as a model, they would like to reach out in the region, so. So, I would definitely keep that in mind. And not wanting to prolong this...
Can we hear from Debbie?
I haven't, I'm kinda new to it.
You're listening, that's okay. I just thought I would give you the chance.
So, if you all agree with this, we will ask zoning, I mean, Jay Hibansky will also discuss this simultaneously with zoning. And one thing I think would make the approval process easier is by talking to our zoning commission members and keeping them in loop about whatever research we are doing and making sure that they're hands-on right from the beginning.
Can I give my five points?
Yes.
I did think of it, I think of this all the time, but, sorry. You know what I'm gonna say. We have, the earliest information that we have about bike lanes in this town goes back to nineteen seventy-nine. Joe Vessi was on the original committee, I think, that's his name. We have planned and planned and planned all of these different, we have the most incredible plans of bike lanes that go all throughout, a network of interconnected schools and communities all up and down Stratford. I think that one of the things we should say for this year is that we go back and review that information, because as planning, we really are the corporate or the knowledge bank. It's important for us to send that information to all the committees. I went to the recent meeting on the dredging of the Army Plant, and there was a guy there from the Maritime Commission, our own coastal commission, who begged that they be able to come to us and make a presentation of what they're looking for in Stratford's vision of the coast. And I thought, "God, you know what? All my time, I've never heard that mentioned." I said, "Yeah, we should have you here, so you, we know what you're working on. If we're, if our job is to help see the vision, then we maybe also need to reach out to other parts of the town and ask them, 'What is it that's written down as our coastal vision? What are you out there trying to pitch and sell?'" So, I just think that if we can attempt to do a few things like that this year, it might give a better vision to other people in town who are working as hard to make Stratford the Stratford that we all dream about, about us having. The other thing that, years ago, when I lived on the North Fork of Long Island, at the very end, we did a vision inventory, which we gathered groups of people and asked them to come up with short list of their vision. What was the images that they carried, that they thought of about Stratford that were the most important? And I know it sounds crazy, but sometimes it was a tree on their corner that that, to them, meant home. It was a piece of swampland where the deer walked out. It was all these kind of like... It was, it was all these kind of like, not high-end real estate projects, it was, it was things that made their community theirs, that were special, that they felt sometimes that they, it was private to them. And I think if we were to do something like that for Stratford, the way it is right now, where, what makes Stratford special to you? That we could actually develop an inventory of things that we need to say, we need to repeat this, we need to enhance this, you know, we could do a lot more with thinking about it. But one of the things that we've got to do is to find a way that the things that we consider important about Stratford as planners, what, how can we get that into our written language so that everybody? Mr. Knott, who I felt good about tonight, last time he was here, made a comment that, oh, we don't want to put a, a pathway with bike, with, with bike racks and picnic benches in front of our facility. We, we just nixed that. We, we ignored it. It's like, well, except that is the East Coast Greenway. It is Stratford's responsibility to complete their section of the East Coast Greenway. So we now are, we have foreclosed that for us. Unless we find ways of making the money to pay for it ourself and then go and intrude upon theirs, we ought to, we ought to go back and look at our zoning and our, our site plan reviews and, and do exactly what is said. If, if, if we need bike racks in this area, then it ought to be a requirement of bike racks and 10-foot sidewalks in every piece of development that goes on. Any major improvements, it should have these following things. And I think that's where we also ought to invite the Architectural Standards Group in to talk to us. Because it's really one and the same thing. If, if they're trying to create a livable visual environment, we are creating the social environment at the same time. It's all interconnected, and we could have them be part of our, of our stick and carrot kind of situation where they could help by, by integrating those into their own regulations, that these are the kind of bike rack we want on all, any facility with, you know, people walking in and out of it. The other thing that we really have to be mindful of, and you're dealing with it all the time, is our major roads are all state roads. Which means we don't, as much as we say Stratford is my little town, it's not. It's a state road that they're going to say what they want. And we need to be better at negotiating with them. We need to make our case with them. I've tried, in my own little ways, to not 100%, but I do believe that Complete Streets was exactly the state acknowledging that, that we were ready to do something. And we need to be ready to march an army on everything when it comes to the state and especially the DOT. We need to be much better at that, and thank heavens you're here now because we were doing it without anybody. So I, I know that we would go to our planner and our zoning administrator to say yes to that. And it's the kind of thing that, there's nothing that's more a planning task than that. So that's an area where we actually, I hope everybody understands, planning is the department that created the, the original Greenway committees in 1979. That comes directly out of our committee. We have jurisdiction over that. That is a planning committee. So if we wanted to go back and revise, review all of our master plan of bike lanes all throughout the town and set priorities to it, and say to the, to the state, these, these written places don't do any work unless you come to us and accommodate our needs in this area, the state eventually would get it, and they would say, okay. But no one has said that to them. And we need to say that. It's our little town, we need to say that.
So you, you just brought up a good point. So 1979, 2020, right? So where has the ball been dropped? It's been dropped in conversation.
Yes.
Right? It's been dropped in conversation. It goes back and forth, and, you know, that's the frustrating, that's the frustrating part. As I said, you know, it's like, you know, if you're going to talk the talk, you got to walk the walk, basically, you know? You know, one thing that we're seeing in businesses now, and I know in our business specifically, they've started these scrum teams where you take an initiative and you work on that one initiative in a short period of time.
And that's what, that's what Smitha was saying.
And I think that's, for us, that's the most important thing.
Yeah.
You can't let these things just, I mean, how many years now that, you know, that we've been talking about it and still haven't done anything about it? So I think, let's come up with one or two particular items that we know that we can at least move the needle on and, and start, start getting some progress on instead of talking about it all the time. Because it does get frustrating.
The other thing, what we have to understand is, we are responsible for the POCD. It, right now, is, is nearing its end. So theoretically, we should be opening up that book and saying, none of this is applicable because we've already done it, or conditions have shifted so much that we're never going to do this.
Start the process whole over.
We are really right at the point of starting that whole process. What we should be doing in the next couple of years is going through our data that we have collected, going through our projects that we've worked on and funded and seen happening, going through what we've learned, what that was good and not good, and saying, what can we pull together to send to this, the next crew that's going to be writing the POCD? Because it, there's going to come a time when it all has to be written immediately. And we should actually think about the vision of the town as planners. What is our vision? How are we going to start pulling that information? Because it's only going to, it doesn't matter what our vision is, it's how does it translate into our regulations? And how does it translate into government? Do you know what I mean? That's where it's going to take place. Otherwise, it just becomes a conversation. So, thank everybody. I think we made it through the agenda, right?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry. Listen, I do, I was not the only one speaking tonight, so I will not take the responsibility for that.
The next steps.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. The next steps would be, I'll be bringing something in terms of research for those two items, and we can discuss. And we'll have probably some community meetings or stakeholder meetings which you will be invited to, and I encourage you to participate. And I, it should be a more ground-up exercise than top-down exercise, I think. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Anybody second that?
I do.
Great, we're adjourned. Right, everybody say yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody object?
You've got to sign right under the.